Good evening, everyone, and welcome to tonight's public hearing on our parking system. Thanks for you at home that are watching. How tonight is going to go, basically, is we've allotted about a minute forty-five to hear comments, but based on the number of people that have signed up, it won't go that long. Then each of the council members will be given two minutes to comment. And then Mr. Bach, who's ushered us through this plan, will tell you how things will follow up where we go from here. Because only six people signed up, I'll be sure to ask anyone in the room that didn't have a chance to do so if they'd like to speak. Just as a reminder, we're allowing only comments on the parking system from last season. So if you have other comments, such as whether you want to speak about how we're going to spend the money, anything other than parking, you'll have an opportunity to provide input at the December twelfth meeting, the next town hall meeting. So please be kind, and we're very much interested to hear your thoughts.
September nineteenth, Mayor.
John was going to cover that, yeah. Thank you. Lisa?
Yes, ma'am. I have Chip Frazier.
Chip Frazier, seven oh six West Dolphin Drive. Mayor and council, thank you for the opportunity for the public hearing. I have several points. I'll just go through them very briefly for you to consider. First of all, I'm a big proponent of the paid parking program. So put me down as an advocate. But that doesn't mean that there's no room for improvement. Y'all already understand that. Some of the things I am going to say may already be under consideration. I don't know, so I'll just put them out there for you to consider. First of all, on season permits, my suggestion is one per address. Instead of allowing a business, for example, to buy up several permits. Next point, in my opinion, and I don't have any inside knowledge, Cocoa Cabana was at a disadvantage based on the way it was done, based on the way the parking program in that area was administered. So I would like to see a fix to my perceived disadvantage. Third, collections in the future. I hope collection information will be provided in future data dumps. The information at the last meeting was great. I really appreciated what they had to say, what the Auto Connect people had to say. But in the future, I would like to see more on what they expect or what they experience in collecting fines for paid parking. And discussing fines for paid parking, in my opinion, if you have an outstanding fine, you should not be able to park. So when somebody comes in, they go through the Auto Connect system, and they have an outstanding fine, Auto Connect should somehow notify them that they are not permitted to park until their outstanding fine is paid off. Not necessarily in an order, a priority order here. The number-one item should be the communication. If there was one failure in the paid parking program, last year it was a lack of communication and poor signage. So hopefully, that will be fixed. And then finally, there should be a long-range plan for parking. I know there's some short-range plans, but a long-range plan has got to consider mainland parking. There's got to be a way to get people with the growth that we're experiencing in this area to the island to enjoy everything we have to offer, but they're not all going to be able to park here. Thank you.
Thank you very much.
Glenn Baker.
Good evening, Town Council, Madam Mayor. I'm Glenn Baker, and I live on one-ten Northeast Sixteenth Street. First of all, I want to start off that I've been an advocate for this program since its inception. And we all know that when you roll out something, of course, you have to come back and readjust to fix things that are... And I appreciate you guys holding this for the town, for our citizens, so you can hear what we see are the issues that have come about from this paid parking program. Now, I have nine talking points, but there's no priority to them. So I'll start off with, I think the resident stickers should stay. And actually, I think there should be more resident-only parking spots. Number two, consider all-access parking for residents handicapped only. Residents are still able to park in all the spots. Police enforcement of resident spots in the off-season and evenings. I have noticed that sometimes, and this is just my perception, when you go by and you see the limited number of resident parking spots, but you see somebody that's there that doesn't have a resident sticker on it, and I understand that you went further and actually had Auto run the license plates on there in that system. But we've all historically seen that that's been an issue. No resident passes to golf carts for rental houses where carts are furnished with rentals. I believe this happens, the owner should lose their resident pass privileges. No season passes. If season passes are kept, then the price should go up considerably. I believe we lost a rather large revenue stream by pricing the resident... Or the season passes extremely low when you compare it to the other beach communities. One season pass per household. No season passes are sold to any of the businesses. And season passes should be only available to Brunswick County residents. And of course, no increase in season passes, possibly a decrease. Thank you for taking the time to listen to us.
Thank you.
Leonard Lowry.
Hello. My name is Leonard Lowry, Bolivia. And my issue is only for non-resident annual passes. And I would suggest to you to make them unlimited in number. We really had difficulty trying to get a pass last year. It was one of the worst experiences I could even tell you about. And I was more than happy to pay for the pass, but I found out that they would be three days for sale in person here, and then three days in which you could call on the phone and perhaps get one that way. So I came down first thing in the morning, and when I pulled up, I could see, you know, the crowd, and someone came up and said, "You're never going to get one. They're sold out," you know? So I went back home, and I planned on setting my alarm clock the next morning to come in, which I did. It was very cold then. It was February, I believe. The line was insane out there. So I waited for hours, and then someone came out of the building with some two-hundred pieces of paper with numbers, and they started giving them. Well, I came up a few numbers short, so I spent the day out there in the cold and did not get a ticket in. So then, the final day, I came back. This time, I set my clock for five o'clock in the morning and came in and was seriously doubting that I would get one of those papers. But this time, I did manage to get myself a paper. Then I had to wait about two hours out here just to get into the office in order to pay for my pass. The phone in the following day, my friends tried, and it was just busy the entire time. So no one that I knew was able to get one that way. Most of those people went down to Holden Beach, and they have them for one-hundred-and-fifty dollars. You could buy one now anytime you want. There's no limit to how many annual passes are sold at Holden Beach. So I would suggest, you know, not having a limit or, you know, only certain days to come in. The other thing I would mention was that if it's a matter of the profiting from it, I believe that by selling the annual passes, you certainly won't lose any money. I myself only went a few times. I just don't really like to have to deal with the cell phone and the app and not know, "Oh, do I have to hurry back to the car? Like, do I have to re-up it?" I like to be able to just pull into a parking place and go to the beach and not have to deal with my phone and, you know... But so the season pass worked out well for me, not having to deal with a cell phone. I don't think you would lose any money by allowing season passes, because my guess is more people would buy them and then not even go. Thank you.
Thank you.
Linda Evans.
I'm Linda Evans. I live at two-fifty-six Northeast Sixty-Fourth Street on the island. Thank you for letting us speak tonight. I do appreciate it. I fully support paid parking. I'm a realtor on the island, and I see the thousands of people that are moving in just off the island. And I think without paid parking, we're not going to be able to even get near our beach shortly. But I do just have a couple of points. One is the spots, the new spots that you put in are great. However, they're quite a bit larger than they need to be for the average car or golf cart. So we have several that we could fit two spots in, I mean, two cars in, two golf carts in one spot. And I believe that that is an offense that you can get a ticket for. But if we've already both paid and we're, you know, active in the program, I don't see why we shouldn't be able to double up on a parking spot. So that's one comment. Two, I know our stickers expire in December. There's people that are asking curious what the new sticker price is going to be. Maybe I've missed it, but that would be good info. And also, if you're... I know the program is going to be revised some. If there was a committee that was put together that had some full-time current homeowners that actually use the beach on a regular basis on that committee, I think that would be good information.
Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Mark Spicer.
Mark Spicer, one-oh-eight Southeast Twentieth Street. Good evening, Madam Mayor and council. I have spoken with several of you all and went over multiple points, but a few I'd like to bring up tonight. First being the resident parking decals. I would support that we continue to use the resident decals. I know Otto responded to a question at the last meeting saying that he was not in favor of continuing with the decals. I would support that we continue with the decals. And I know it appears that it would be helpful off-season to enforce the resident-only parking spaces. And I personally don't see why it has to be tied in even to Otto. If he wants to run their system, it could be completely different. But our police department would need the decals to be able to enforce it outside of the regular seizing. The annual passes, I would encourage you to consider limiting those to Brunswick County, at least initially. If we have a cap and they haven't all sold after a certain date, and we want to open it up beyond that, but I think Brunswick County should get first dibs at the annual passes. Also, one of the big issues was the walkover streets. When the original plan was being put together, there was talk about those were going to be part of paid parking, the southeast streets, Ninth, Twentieth, Thirty-first, and that didn't happen. Speaking to Twentieth, being I live there, see it day in and day out. When the paid parking first started, it was nothing but mass chaos, and there were problems every day. Finally, the town did come and put in the wheel stops or bumpers, and that helped to at least organize the parking that people weren't parking just anywhere squeezed in. But as the season went on, it was daily that you saw people park there, unloading all their beach gear, headed across the walkover, going to the beach, and parking there for free all day. So I would encourage those locations to be Twentieth. Twentieth, by far, has the largest amount of parking as any of those streets. So thank you for your consideration, and my time is up.
Tammy Smith.
Hello, I'm Tammy Smith. I live on one-twenty-two Northwest Fifth Street. Glad to be here. I try to make it every one, but don't always get to. Just wanted to make a note that I had to walk two miles at Labor Day. I was in a golf cart, went everywhere, down toward the point. We were about on right past where Blue Point Marina is. I had people here from out of town, so of course, I wanted to show them a good time. So I let them out, and I searched everywhere to get a parking space. There was none to be had. So there's a lady I happened to know that lived nearby on the back street there, and she was not at home, but her renter was, and they allowed me to park there. I had to walk two miles back up the beach to get to my party, which I'm grateful I'm physical enough that I can. But there's a lot of people that lives here that could not do that, and that was a concern for me. I don't know what the solution would be. I know One Beach does allow parking on, I guess, what the town owns, the front, the side of the road. I don't know if that's called row down here or what it's called. That's the only thing I know, because there was nowhere else to park. And also, someone got a little aggressive with us. My husband let me out, you know, on the beach side, because there was nowhere to park. So I'm getting my stuff before I can step away, and he back out. He's over here, want to give him a ticket, and he's trying to just let me out. And he said, "I'm going to park across the street." I didn't know what that was so aggressive about. And then, on the money, about how much the parking pass is for the residents, how do we know that this is not going to increase yearly, that our price is going to go over the roof for this? I mean, can we not cap this within a two-, three-year thing, that our resident parking amount is, you know, going to stay the same for like the next three years, maybe? That was my concern. Thank you.
Thank you.
That's all that had signed up.
Is there anyone else here tonight that would like to speak that didn't have a chance to sign up? Go ahead.
Thank you for letting me have this opportunity. My name is Jan Ratliff. I live at three-oh-five Northeast Fiftieth Street. I have been a full-time resident now for about five-and-a-half years. This summer, the parking was a fiasco. We go to Forty-Ninth Street Beach Access probably three to four days a week. And this summer, for the first time ever, we parked at the ball field more than we parked anywhere else. There was no such thing as resident parking. I got into arguments with people that had the rental golf carts, that had the passes, because they thought they could park anywhere, and they weren't a resident, but they parked there anyway. The parking bumpers are not laid out effectively as they could be. In the skate park, they could rearrange those bumpers and get many more cars in there. Sixty-third Street Access has all resident parking. I think all Beach Access should be for residents only. I also think there should be more LSV parking, because we take up less room. And there are a lot of us. We should be allowed to double up like we did before. I mean, we could get two and three golf carts in one parking space, and we didn't block emergency access, ever. It's the big duly trucks with the extended cabs that the... I mean, you know, you need LSV parking, just like we do by the craft fair. We need more of it, and we take up less room. Fifty-second Street Beach Access is an emergency access, as well as Forty-Ninth. And I was a beach ambassador. I know the rules. Fifty-second Street has two parallel spots on the right side, which is, pardon me, it's insane. Nobody ever can park parallel. They're in there cockeyed, upside-down and up right-way. And, I mean, they need to remove those two. I'm sure they're parallel because of a big truck or a big vehicle blocking the Beach Access. But if they made that whole side LSV, they could probably get a half a dozen or more golf carts in there, and they'd be parked correctly, instead of the people trying to park there are messing up the whole friggin' lot. I'm sorry. It's just the way I talk. But I just appreciate this opportunity. I've complained all summer. I don't have a problem with paid parking. I do wish you would enforce the decals. I think that us as residents need our decals. Thank you.
Thank you. Anyone else wish to speak? Going once, going twice? Go ahead.
Thank you. My name is Nicole Anderson. I am an enforcement officer and a marketing assistant for Surf Cat. I am grateful to be here, and thank you for all coming. I'm glad everybody loves the paid parking. The only... I do understand about the decals and enforcing them at nighttime. I worked over the summer at Lazy Turtle at the nighttime to make some extra money. And I worked at Cocoa at the very beginning, but Lazy Turtle was more favorite for me. Over there, I've watched... I did mostly the east side, so Bill actually saw me doing parking most of the time. So I understood people were watching, people were seeing us, people would have their comments. It's hard to get everybody communication when there's only like three of us working the whole island and communication not being built through people reading the signs properly, when everything is detailed on the sign itself. Yes, I understand the parallel parking a little bit, at least on the one-way streets, because some of them are smaller than the east side. I only did the west side twice the whole season, and backing in and out in my vehicle when the big trucks were in the spots that's closest to the Beach Access, that was kind of scary, because I actually one time did send Bill a photo of a tight spot that I could not get out of onto the back, to the main road, because I have an SUV, and there was like four big pickups up there. And I'm not a scared driver. I love this area. And actually, my parents are residents of the island, so I mostly live over here. I just live in Southport, because I live at the campground. And Cellar Street, there is a garage that they use the garage as... They use it as storage, and they have... They gave me permission to try not to give people tickets there if they park there, but because there's no bumper in front, and I understand that's blocking it. But the homeowner has said they don't care if people park in front of the garage. Just to give that out. Thank you.
Thank you very much. Paul, did you have your hand up?
Paul Dubay, eleven-oh-five East Stoke Island Drive. I'll just be really brief here. Yes, I've been a proponent of paid parking since its inception. I just want to piggyback on almost everybody's concern about the resident stickers. I think we should go forward in issuing stickers again for a couple of different reasons. One, in case of an evacuation here. It's an easy way for law enforcement to allow us to... The residents to get back on the island. And also, it's an easy way for the dump to decide, to determine who's a resident and who is not. So that's the only thing I wanted to say. Thank you.
Thank you. Anyone else? Do we have a motion to close public hearing? Or public comments? You don't need a motion?
No, ma'am.
Not a regular meeting. Counsel, you have... Well, the clock is set for three. So you have three minutes to offer any comments to the group that you would like to make.
Go ahead, Mark. Oh, well, I would just like to say that, you know, in 2021, the three candidates that were elected, myself, Councilman Kraft, and Bach was re-elected, we all campaigned on paid parking. And so I'm glad to hear that everybody, for the most part, is an advocate for paid parking. They feel like it was... It worked. It was successful. I think we do need some revisions, and that's something that this... That council will consider. I will tell you, we've already been passing notes and collaborating, which has been really good and productive. So I appreciate everyone's patience this first season. I think year two, with a little bit of improvements, we'll have another successful year of paid parking. And I do believe it went far in helping control some of the chaos. For those of you that remember parking season of 2022, it was literally chaos out there. People were parking wherever they felt like their vehicle could fit in a spot, including private property, right-of-way, in the ditch, up the bank, probably out on the beach if they thought they could get away with it. So that was certainly one of the objectives for paid parking, was to reduce the chaos and bring some sanity to our ability to control parking or manage parking. And in the end, it provided a little revenue stream as well, so we will thank for that. So just a big thank you to everybody involved, Otto, the residents, visitors, I mean, everybody. You know, yeah, we had some incidents, but I think for the most part, we were all pretty pleased with how we ended up. So a big thank you to everyone.
I'd like to go back a ways. When this whole thing got started many years ago without paid parking, I didn't know whether I was for it or against it. But what we came up with, I think, was a good idea. The first year, we collected all the data, all the stats, and now they got those to work with. So I was also very much pleased by the revenue stream. And to echo what Mark said, the patience and the feedback, really appreciate that. And to echo what Mark said, the patience and the feedback, really appreciate that. As someone else has also said, it's not perfect. We need to make adjustments, common sense adjustments. And I think, like I said, I think with the information we have now, we could do just that. Thank you all very much for your input. Keep doing it.
If I have three minutes, I'm going to play by the rules. Bill Kraft, 204 Barbie Boulevard. I wrote down my notes that I wanted to share, my thoughts. Resident pass should remain at $10. Golf cart parking should double up to create more spaces. Respectfully, Chief Morris, the police need to enforce a right-of-way and illegal parking at night more so. I've been told more than once that we need better signage down at the point. We ended up with 247 town parking spots. We were striving for 350. So if we were striving for 350 last year, I would like to strive for 450 reserved parking spots for our people that's coming here. Paid parking for out-of-towners, I think, needs to increase. Short-term rentals should be allowed to purchase town passes if they have proof that they are a registered voter in Oak Island. I think we can address that. As Councilman Martin said, and as Councilman Blaylock said, this is a learning experience. We'll get better, but we're asking the people of the town to help us get better. So we're listening and we'll get better. Walkovers on 9th Street and 20th Street, as Mr. Spicer said, need better police enforcement. Things are going on down there that should be enforced. Stickers, that's a tough issue. People have different thoughts. My thought is, yes, I'd like to see stickers come back. And the reason I want to see stickers come back is not for the benefit of Otto, that's not Otto's fight. It's for the benefit of the people of Oak Island. When Otto leaves at 5:00 at night, people then go down, somebody from not Oak Island, goes down and parks in a preferred parking space. There's no way for our police to know. License plate recognition just says they paid. There's no way for our police to know, are those people Oak Island residents that are parking in that preferred spot? A sticker could help that. Lastly, Nicole, I appreciate you very much, ma'am. Jim Varner will tell you from Otto, he wishes he had more employees making the rounds and doing the work. So I've had three or four of my friends tell me, Bill, how do I get a job with auto parking this summer? Reach out to them. They need people and people need jobs.
We started talking about paid parking in 2016, I think, the first time. I was not for paid parking. I fought it really hard until the summer of '21 and '22, when, like Mark said, people were parking everywhere. We had been let out from the pandemic and everybody wanted to come to the beach and they didn't care where they parked. So we did get the data, we did do the studies, we did talk about it. Seeing you guys be involved tonight, that helps everything. I think we had a good year. There is some tweaking that needs to be done, but stay involved and we'll get there. I don't need three minutes.
No, ma'am. You do not. First of all, thank you for coming out. Thank you for your feedback. We appreciate that. Tonight was a listening experience for us, and I think we need to do more of that. Whenever you launch a project that threatens culture and norms and past practice, it's a huge undertaking. There's risk involved, but we managed that risk effectively because, as my colleagues have mentioned repeatedly, the citizens of this community adjusted and they made sense out of the rules. Were the rules perfect? No, of course not. Are there things that need to be tweaked? Certainly. Is it going to be difficult? I mean, I don't have a complete platform to offer you because I'm listening. And tonight, for example, it's interesting. People are for restricting passes, people are for increasing passes. So it's, you know, it's an interesting dilemma as we look at all of the facets. And I would say that the target that we had of $800,000 was exceeded. So this is certainly an unqualified success for year one, imperfect though it may be. And we offset that against future costs, right? For recreation, for infrastructure, for sand. So this can be a stabilizing permanent revenue source. That was a major achievement, however imperfect it was. Huge. I, for one, would like to see the parking design reimagined with professional assistance to optimize the spaces and to promote safe traffic and access. And I think that's something we need to think about. I'll also say there were some unanticipated benefits. First of all, I've never seen so many people walking to the beach, cycling to the beach. Very positive, healthy community. I saw a lot of people dropping off. Well, that's a smart adjustment, isn't it? Yeah, okay, that made a lot of sense. That helped to distribute, you know, the population along the beach. So that was, that was all positive. It was much more orderly, as my colleagues have noted. It was not chaos. You cannot park wherever you want, even if you parked at 40th Street for the last 20 years. That's stopped. Can't park in somebody's yard. You can't use their, you know, all of that is better. So that's progress. I think what we need to do is look at the next steps, and clearly, data analysis is part of that. We need to think about what you've said. We need to think about what Otto recommended. We need to take a closer look at the data. In fact, we've asked Otto for more data. I think we're going to have some serious discussion and probably, I think, differing points of view. Do we need decals, et cetera? Analysis is the next step. Review and discussion, decision on December 19th. So I'll invite you, as the mayor did, to come on the 12th and certainly come on the 19th. And again, thank you for being here tonight.
Thank you, everyone, and I appreciate everyone coming tonight. As Sheila said, please continue to be involved. You are the boots on the ground and we need to hear from you. So I hope that you will follow along with counsel going forward. And I appreciate all of the colleagues for their input. I think that's also important. And just echo everyone's comments about, we appreciate you're trying to make the best of an imperfect system. We appreciate your flexibility and your cooperation. I think there are very good things that came out of this, more so than just the financial gain, although anytime there's an opportunity for additional revenue streams, it helps to keep the taxes down. So this was a big win in that regard. So again, thank you for coming. Thank everyone here for their input.
They're just a point of privilege. I don't want to leave out the administration and most of all, our workers who made this happen on the fly in the first year. The adjustments were ongoing and continual and we'll get better at it next year, but I wanted to make sure we thanked them and acknowledged them.
Well deserved. So do we need an agenda, I mean, a motion to close? Switcher, if you're ready.
So moved, Madam Mayor.
Sir Second, all in favor? Excellent. Thank you.